Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2016. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, this is the public session portion of the meeting. The Board started tonight an executive session where we discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining updates by town manager relative to the fire, and also discuss strategy with respect to deployment of public safety. We'll start the public session off as we always do with a public forum, where residents are invited to share ideas, opinions, or ask questions regarding town government. Do we have anyone who'd like to come forward and see? Please. Pam, first. Can I get...I'm sorry, sir, I didn't see you.
(laughing)
Can I hear you?
No. Pam Waxlax, 15th Smith Road. I'm back to talk about the trash and the E.L. Harvey contract, and hoping that you will consider moving forward again with the idea of single-stream recycling. Based on both the EPA and Columbia University studies, single-stream recycling is...has the highest participation rate of any recycling out there, and given the amount of trash that we throw away, I really think that if we can move to a single-stream recycling, we will do better with this.
Thank you. Sir?
Rick Salfaro, 132 Fruit Street, Hopkinton. I would like to present to you the voice of the community through many signatures of many distraught Hopkinton residents. Residents are questioning why this current situation regarding the fire chief has had to come this far. I have been a Hopkinton resident for 67 years, and have known and respected all the fire chiefs, starting with Joe Pine, followed by Arthur Stewart, Rick McMillan, Gary Dougherty, Kenny Clark, and I have known Steve Slimmon most of his life. All of these men were raised in Hopkinton, except for Gary Dougherty. We have all seen firsthand their hard work and dedication to the fire department, to the town of Hopkinton, and have all come up through the ranks in the fire department. Mr. Palanco, you communicated recently in the police department promotions that it was a privilege to see the officers in the department come up through the ranks. Why not the fire department? The citizens of this community are perplexed at the resistance of the selectmen not willing to listen to the opinion regarding the fire chief. It shows a lack of respect towards the residents in this town trying to provide the best choice for fire chief. Steve Slimmon is clearly the best choice for fire chief. He has proven his dedication and qualifications to the community beyond a reasonable doubt. It is time to do the right thing, appoint Steve Slimmon as full-time fire chief. I would now like to present to you 18 pages of signatures of distraught citizens of Hopkinton wanting this situation to be resolved and to appoint Steve Slimmon as our fire chief.
Fine, ma'am. Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great.
Don Collins, 45 Theresa Road. I'm also Assistant Fire Chief at Massport Fire Rescue at Logan Airport. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen for their service to the town of Hopkinton, as I appreciate the time and efforts dedicated to make Hopkinton a better place to live and raise our families. I would also like to thank the Fire Chief Search Committee for their time and efforts in vetting through all the candidates who applied, interviewing those qualified, and forwarding the names of whom they thought would be a good fit for the town. This committee should be lauded for their efforts, as the Police Chief Search Committee was a year previous. I have traveled all over the country in my 32 years as a firefighter, training, learning, teaching, selling fire equipment, and unfortunately attending funerals. I belong to many fire organizations, both professionally and socially. I have sat on interview panels for promotions and was involved with auditing two textbooks. I have seen many different faces of the fire service, both superior and not so. I've been a teammate, hunting partner, classmate, EMT partner, and a line mate on many hose lines with Steve Slimmon. I responded to numerous fires, accidents, and any number of emergencies with favorable outcomes and some not. Steve Slimmon, I can assure you, is as solid as they come. He was the initial incident commander at one of the darkest times in Hopkinton's recent history, on the early morning hours of July 24th, 2002, as two beautiful young sisters were killed in a house explosion. Steve knew immediately that they were too late, also realizing that the call had been...that if the call had been directed to the fire department moments earlier, that he and his crew may have been killed, as they would have been walking in the front door as the building came down around them. All this going through his mind in mere seconds, as he knew that he still had a search and rescue mission to organize, fires to put out, gas to shut off, and initiate calls for extra resources, all before he passed command to the chief upon his arrival. Steve Slimmon is an extremely educated, self-motivator, who has worked hard to be certified as an executive chief fire officer, a title not carried by many. He's humble in the fact of always looking to better himself and his crew, however experienced enough to be able to make a quick life-for-debt decision with total confidence. Steve is a town resident who has made his way up to the ranks with hard work and sacrifice. Steve has also risen through the ranks at basically the same rate as chiefs in most of the surrounding towns of Hopkinton, and has established great relationships with all of them through the years, and he has the respect of all of them. Steve Slimmon has worked hard to get where he is today. He is solid, he is humble, and he is the best choice for the job at Hopkinton Fire Chief. Let's stop this charade to give Steve the respect that he deserves. Thanks for your time.
Maybe I'll ask for public forum.
Tom McIntyre, 29 Pleasant Street. I'm a member of the Hopkinton Fire Department. I've been for four years. I've seen Steve Slimmon in action. I can't really add much more than what Don Collins said, but seeing him in action, he knows his stuff, and there's not a problem with him being chief in this town, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Maybe I'll ask for public forum. All right, thank you all. Next time the agenda is the consent agenda, it's action items. First one is minutes. The Board will consider accepting the following public session minutes of February 2nd, 2016. The second is a bond authorization note, an action item pursuant to various articles of the 2050X annual town meetings. The Board will consider approving a bond authorization note in the amount of $9 million for various capital projects approved at respective town meetings. Third is a marathon fund request. The Board will consider approving a marathon fund request for $1,750 for the purpose of transferring 16 Hopkinton High School football films from 1930 through 1982, from 8mm or 60mm films to QuickTime files. These will be shown at various times as part of Hot TVs from the Vault programming. And the fourth is board appointments, an actual item. The Board will consider appointing candidates to the Upper Trails Committee and the Marathon Committee. The Metro West 495 partnership is listed, but that is actually not an appointment from the Board of Selectmen. Would anyone like to break out any of the items on the consent agenda? Number three, please. Number three, which is the marathon fund request. I guess we should probably break up board appointments, too. Do we have the appointees here?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay. So Chair Lantana motion approve items one and two in the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion second for discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, present, not voting, that's unanimous. Item three, marathon fund request, Mr. Sistari.
I'm just...I'd love to see this happen. I'm just trying to remember exactly what the, I guess, charter of the marathon fund monies is supposed to be directed at, and whether this is something that's better for... Was in track of which other fund, but...
CPA?
CPA, thank you very much. Yeah, CPC, CPA. So I'm just wondering exactly what the charge is and make sure that it fits under that.
Marathon Fund people aren't here tonight, right? Mr. Kamala, can you take that?
Yes, through the chair. The charge is very general. It supports activities that are related to sport activities by the community.
Youth in the community, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's the answer.
Okay. You know, again, I'd like to see this happen, but I'm not sure that this really supports the activities of youth in the community.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, not to pile on, over the years, I've been very supportive of the marathon fund and the requests from the marathon fund. This one caught me by surprise for that reason that Mr. Sistari, I think, is bringing up. I'm not opposed to it, but I'd be interested in hearing more before I vote for it, from the committee itself.
Yeah, we talked about youth, yet I work over at Golden Pond, and there are many Hopkinton residents that live there, and there are a couple of them that are always talking about their football careers at Hopkinton High School. You know, and, you know, this might be one of those things that they would just love to see. So, you know, I still think...because they relive their youth a lot.
Well, I don't think anyone's questioned the merits, Mr. Kamala. I think the question is the funding source.
Where should the money come from? I'd vote for it either way, but I want to understand why it's coming from this fund and not CPC.
All right, why don't we take no action this time, Mr. Kamala? Can we think about this more deeply and maybe have the marathon fund folks come in?
Because I think if it starts a trend, then we got to be careful.
Yeah, okay. Can we just...can we rethink this? Okay. All right, we'll take that up next time. And then board appointments, I just wanted to break this out because I did case some of the folks are here. So the Upper Charles Trail Committee, we have one applicant to go from an all-voter member to a full member, and that's because of an opening, Mr. Kamala, on the committee? So is there any chance Dave O'Brien's in the room? Okay. So again, this one's fairly perfunctory. And then the second one is for a relative newcomer to town here, Mr. Chuck Wallace, who's looking to join the Marathon Committee, which apparently has an outstanding chair, if one hadn't been right of her. So... (laughing) So, I don't know if anyone wants to discuss any of those or hear anything more about it. Otherwise, the Chair will maintain a motion to approve both those appointments.
We'll through all three.
The 495 partnership isn't one of our appointments. We don't make that.
Good.
So it's...and the motion would be to approve Dave O'Brien to the Upper Charles Trail Committee and Chuck Wallace to the Marathon Committee.
I think we had a motion and I'll second.
We have a motion and a second already? Just clarifying, just clarifying for you what it was.
Yeah, I'm on it.
All right, motion second for discussion. Everyone's all set, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, present, not voting, that's unanimous. Welcome, Chuck, to the Marathon Committee.
Thanks very much.
(laughing) I thought he was already on it, so...
(laughing) All right. All right, now off to the highlight of this evening's events. 30th Anniversary Celebration Committee sealing of the time capsule. Gene Birchammon, the Chair of the now legendary 30th Anniversary Celebration Committee, will close and put a final seal on one of the boxes for the time capsule and will fix the plaque to the bench. Ms. Birchammon.
Thank you. Like a bad penny, we keep turning up. So I'm joined by Mike Whalen and John Foster, who I know are familiar to you, who...John is the artisan who crafted this incredible bench, and Mike is the brave soul who dug the old time capsules out of the 2,000-pound granite stone at the Korean church. So today, I asked him if he would seal the new time capsules, and he didn't even have to remove his tie. So I think this was an easier task today, but I wanted to give him the honor of doing that, since he did the heavy lifting for us the last time. So the time capsules, there are three. There are two to be opened in 2065, so 50 years, and one to be opened in 100 years in 2115. The big one for 2000... and I sent you all a list of the contents. The big one has all manner of documentation from the year, and then there's another one that has letters primarily from kids in town to themselves 50 years in the future, so...
Tell me, you're getting right to it. You can't...
Yeah, he's not fooling around. I also want to thank Chris Alejandra, who was on our committee, and he helped us.
Yeah, he did a fantastic job on these boxes. They're really heavy duty. This is the big one.
Can we show it to the crowd? Is there any chance we can lift it out, or is it already kind of in?
There is no chance.
It's in, never mind, disregard.
Yeah, we can't...this is the one...we can't get our fingers around it to pull it back out, so that's a problem for somebody 50 years in the future. But I will say, John...so John is sealing it now with tamper-proof screws with a special bit on his drill, and if the people in the future do not have that, he has cleverly concealed one right there in the bottom of the bench for them. So he's made it as easy as he possibly can for them to retrieve it. There's an International Society for Time Capsules, believe it or not, that registers time capsules, so I will register all three of these. They estimate that 9,000 of the 10,000 time capsules in existence have been lost. So we're doing everything we can to hide this in plain view in the library and register it and put as many pointers as we can to it and, you know, control whatever variables we can to make sure that people at the next celebration will find it and enjoy revealing it the way that we did when we dug the old ones out of the Korean church. So thank you for your representation. This has been a really fun project.
Mr. Chair, so is the bench going to reside in the library?
Yeah, it's going to sit here for the next year until the new building's done, and then it'll be moved over to some secure location in the library, you know, inside the main doors. Along with that quilt thing is going to go over there, too.
It's really nice.
Yeah, actually...
Where did that come from?
Gene...
Can we talk about that?
Yeah, talk about the new prop here.
So that will also go in the library...John, your drill bit's still in there.
He's got it.
That will go...that was a fundraiser for the library renovation project. It was worked on by a lot of quilters in town, and Susan Marshall really did a tremendous amount to solicit donations and sell the book spines. There are some notable authors on there. Laura Helenbrand, the author of Unbroken, signed a spine. Geraldine Brooks, so a lot of really internationally known authors signed it, as well as a lot of people in town donating money. The middle shelf represents all of the founding fathers that donated the original money to get the library built in the first place.
Yeah, it's very symbolic.
So it's sort of to honor them. So yeah, so hopefully these two things will stay together in the library and be enjoyed by everybody.
It's very nice.
Excellent.
So I think John and Mike can tip the bench back up for you and place it here.
I will come back tomorrow and put the rest of these screws in.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. So if anyone wants to break in, they should break in tonight.
So it is a little bit heavier now.
And you'll see, when they turn it over, you'll see there's also a plaque in the front that really says, like, right here, this is where they are. So hopefully people will find them.
I'll let them giant billboard.
And open them up.
Excellent.
Yeah.
So we'll just put it in front here for the community.
Yeah, well, you guys should get a picture with it one last time.
All right.
All right.
Very nice. Good job, thank you.
Gene, you want one final picture with your crew here in front of it? Sit on it, relax.
You guys should sit on the bench.
Take a load off, sit on the bench.
Cross your legs.
Stay the master meeting there, you guys can...I'll get out of the way. Yeah, I'll get out of the way. Trust me, no one wants...
Photo plumbing. Well done. Nice bench.
And I do want to make one final comment out of Mike, the Alpha and the Omega here, who got the other one, got the old ones out. Gene, all the old ones went back in there too, right? You didn't mention that part, but...no, the old ones didn't go back in there. Never mind, disregard. Okay, so fine. Old ones are saved for posterity.
They are in the...
Got to put them back, cornerstone.
And an undisputed...
Yeah, Mike, you got to tip the stone over and put the old one back down.
Norman's office.
You had fun doing that one. You had fun.
I did have fun. All right. Moonlight alarm, the BAA Boston Marathon Parade Permits, an action item. I want to start by saying, this is not the big event tonight when they all come in and everything. This is just a perfunctory, get the parade permits done, so you all can save your commentary. Yes, exactly. So the Board will consider the following parade permits for the Boston 2016...I'm going to have a look at you when I say that. 2016 Boston Marathon. Proposals to BAA, it's a training run, starts at Main Street Hopkinton and ends in Boston, Mass. Date and time, March 26th, 2016, 6:00 AM to 11:00 AM, street closing, ZARIN, and attachment, and there's applications and permitting team comments, none of which I think are anything at all, actually. And then the second one is another run proposed by the BAA. It starts at Main Street, ends in Boston, Mass. Date and time, April 18th, 2016. That might be a little larger crowd for it. And again, they seek the permit here, but they'll come in at a later date to have the full-blown discussion about all the activities that go around it. Unless, Dottie, do you have anything you want to say tonight, or are you good? Save it for later? Okay, good. Right on. Well, you got a hard-working new volunteer, I understand, so you should be able to dump the load on somebody there. Okay, anybody in the chair have any comments, questions, sir?
Quick question. Did we change the size of the field this year? Is it still 36, I believe?
No, 30,000.
30,000.
It went back to 30 this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't see that.
No, it's okay. I can go over the timeline and just kind of go over to review it. That certainly welcome the opportunity to say a couple words.
It's an easy sell, so I would just...
Oh, great. But let me just go over the timeline real quick, if we may. For the actual marathon itself, at 6:00 AM, we plan on having the military marchers. That'll be no more than 100 National Guard soldiers that'll march down the course. No rucksacks allowed. It'll just be with maybe a water bottle in their possession, and they'll be in their uniforms. At 8:50, we'll have the mobility impaired. Push rims at 9:17 for the men's division, at 9:19, the women's division. Hand cycles will go at 9:22. The elite women at 9:32, and then 10:00 AM is the wave one and the elite men, and then 25 minutes later, for four waves, will be waves two, three, and four. So wave four will go off at 11:15. We expect the last runner across the starting line around 11:28 in the morning, and then across... cross over the Hopkinton Ashland Town Line at around 11:55 AM, and we expect to have the roads reopened around 1:30 at the latest. So that's the general synopsis, again, 30,000. Complete the course, and we request the permission to keep all the roads accessible the way we've had in the past, also using what was formerly Kalella's parking lot, which would be CVS. We've been in conversations with Crosspoint Associates for, you supported John's, Athletes' Village will remain the same, the club bus program will remain the same. So in all intents and purposes, we have the same footprint as we've had the last year now. So nothing more to add, except for the training run that you mentioned is going to be on March 26. We do have quite a few runners that'll be coming into Hopkinton for that, again, brought in by buses, primarily a drop-off in the Hopkinton Common area, and then they'll proceed anywhere from 6:00 AM to 11:00 AM down the course. We've had a couple of people approach us about possibly having drop-offs at the Hopkinton High School. We're trying to discourage that, just because of the school committee, and we don't want to create any, you know, burden onto the school properties or anything like that. So we've asked for the road closures and the support of the Hopkinton Police Department, which they've responded to really well. We'll have portage on facilities, and we'll have presence out here from the BAA on March 26.
Thank you. Chief, just to confirm, you're good with all this?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Mr. Chair, any more questions, comments? Mr. Mosher.
No questions.
No questions.
I think we're good. Chair Lantana motion to approve the two requested parade permits.
So move.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, present, not voting, that's unanimous.
Great.
Looking forward to it. Thank you very much for coming in tonight. Dottie, we'll see you again, whatever, a month or so. Thanks. Item 16 on the agenda, Police Chief, interim fiscal year 2016 goals review, it's a discussion the Police Chief will provide an update on his fiscal year 2016 goals and departmental activities. Chief, welcome. Nice to see you.
Good to see you, it's the Chair.
So thanks for coming in, so again, I think this is just, having seen you in a while in a formal fashion, I guess at least here, so come on in, tell us what's going, how's your goals coming, and then just generally, could you just talk about the department, you know, how you feel about things, just kind of give us a vibe.
If you'd like, I'll go over the goals real quickly and where I am at them at this point. Accreditation is first, and I'm just going to give you a simple policy.
Thanks, Chief.
To look at at your convenience.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks. The first goal is to continue the accreditation process and move into the second phase. I'm pleased to announce that we have certainly done that. The big thing that the Board was requiring was to implement the top 12 high-risk policies, the so-called dirty dozen. The committee has been able to work and get some model policies with the federal standards for use of force, domestic violence, responsive calls, authorized weapons, handling of juveniles, uniformed appearance rules and regulations, property and evidence, handling mentally ill, pursuit, cruiser video, internal affairs, the one you have there is the sexual harassment policy, citizens' complaints, police media. One of the things that I put down was to seek input and feedback from mascot members, and that's all, I also included members from dispatch. We're in the process of every week, looking at each policy and deciding if there needs any adjustments or anything we can build upon and move forward, so that's smooth sailing at this point. Second goal.
So Chief, just to summarize, so the policies, you're just moving along, you basically get these drafts in place and you just sort of revise them first.
Absolutely, we will have them in by July, hopefully to have more than just the 13th as the process, now that we have a certain patent that we're doing, we're creating the policies, reviewing them, and then we're in the process of implementing and training, and that's what we have.
And you told us before, Brett, can you remind me, how many are there total?
There's about 270 different standards, so sometimes you can have different.
We're 23 years away from being done with this.
Get it done quick. There's a lot that are very simple and easy to maintain that we probably already have, and we're just going to review and update.
Got it, okay. Yes, sir.
If I may, through the Chair, Chief, with regard to any policies that relate to the dispatch or combined communication center, could you please make sure you collaborate with the Fire Chief as well as Town Hall?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The SEP Ted Officer, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, created a position on the Police Department. We chose Arthur Schofield, a young, very energetic officer, who has also joined the crime prevention team with Officer Buckley, done an outstanding job as we speak now. He's in a week-long SEP Ted school, the basic SEP Ted, it's a four-hour school, introduction to SEP Ted, strategies, concepts, human behavior, barriers, lighting, planning, it's a whole, the whole gamut of, basic of SEP Ted. And once he comes out of that, he'll be a certified SEP Ted officer. From there, we will work with the Town Manager in planning to have SEP Ted officer part of the planning team. So that's the next step, when he completes the training. And of course, the other element would be getting him involved in doing, we do security audits now, right now it's basically, people go on vacation, we offer house checks, spot checks, and we do quite a few, especially during the summertime, but this SEP Ted officer will be involved in an actual, a security audit, if people have questions and problems or things, or something we might be able to touch upon and let them know where they can improve on their security. So that's moving ahead, and that certainly should be done by July. Create a communication plan for the department, enhance current communication with the Governing Board and partners in the community. I think the Chair and I have certainly worked, along with the rest of the Board, on the best way of communicating with the Board via texts, emails, and of course, phone calls if needed, and I think that's been pretty smooth as of late. I know there's been problems in the past with that, but I think we're moving ahead on that. Create a essence of transparency by providing the public with performance measures and other pertinent information. Right now, in the process of working with Worcester State and their interns, to have them develop a better website, that's kind of two-way, providing forms for the public, as well as us releasing performance measures and letting people know exactly what we do, how we do it, and quantifying what we do. Build on a relationship with the local media, we certainly use the local media to get the message out, and our Public Information Officer, Joe Lieutenant Bennett, certainly has a great working relationship, he just went to some recent training on dealing with the media and garnering a good relationship with them. Just a few of the community outreach things that we have done in this area, just since July, is social media, we certainly build upon that, and that begins to flourish. Public Service Announcement, which was done by Officer John Corrigan to reach out to people with, letting them know about the Good Samaritan Law, which involves opiates, certainly, don't hesitate and call, you know, you won't be arrested if you do report that someone is having an overdose. As a matter of fact, we had an ARKAN save the other night because someone made that phone call. We've had Facebook likes are up 50%, Twitter is up 13%, detectives are engaged with merchants, doing banks and alcohol vendor compliance checks, our home, I already mentioned home Officer Buckley and Schofield have lectured on fraud and scams at the senior center. We have created a safe exchange zone at the Police Department, and people are using it, it's like UPS out there for trading packages, but it's certainly a good idea, and I certainly got a lot of feedback from the public, that people can go in a safe place if they order something on the internet, they're not sure who they're dealing with, they meet in the police parking lot, or obviously, we're open 24/7, or the lobby if they choose, if they feel safer and able to make their transaction. National Night Out continues to grow. Our involvement with Hopkinton Prevention Coalition has certainly moved forward, we've taken part in the showing the movie Anonymous People, had a community meeting, family perspective on addiction recovery, we now have a needle drop box in the station, a kiosk, and we'll be attending a lecture by Chris Herring, a former NBA basketball star, who, as he came to addiction, was able to become clean. We have the Drug Take Back Day, Officer Buckley performs at the senior center. We continue to install car seats, and we were able to obtain a grant for $2,000 worth of car seats. We have hosted the Rape Aggression Training Class, that actually wrapped up last night, and we had 24 participants, 24 female participants, over a six-class period, and it was very successful, a lot of good feedback on that. We started a partnership, the Hopkinton Autism and Special Needs Parent Connection, we continue to look forward hosting another entertainment and educational day, we had a National Autism Day at the Police Department with Torres at the Police Station, and we were also training one dispatcher and one officer to the outreach program, protecting missing children with special needs. We continue to work the jail diversion program, we have a mental health clinician at our disposal, and also works one week on patrol with the offices, and the benefits of that have been great. Not to stay up here all night, but there's many more things going on in the Police Department, obviously, the recruitment drive, we've hired two officers, and we're looking to have two or more officers in front of the Board our next session. We promoted the two lieutenants that you're all aware of, added an extra detective to the ranks, not to stomp on it, but move some people around, and did a lot of work with the, earlier in the year, with the 300th, with the security, and we were able to get dispatch, consolidate dispatch up and running for a trial run during that process. So it's been a busy six months, and we hopefully will continue upon that.
Any big problems we should be aware of, anything you're really concerned about, any?
Nope, things are going pretty smooth.
Okay.
Knock on wood.
Questions, Mr. Sistari?
I took my question. Chief.
We lost Chuck, that's a problem.
Chief, you know, you keep bringing folks through here from the Department, it's great to have the visibility, you know, down to the individual contributor level. Over the last year, year-plus, we've seen so many incredible young men and women coming through here, whether there is new officers, or people being promoted, or just people explaining new programs to us, and their qualifications and achievements never cease to amaze me. And, you know, it's clear that you've got an incredible group to work with, but it's also clear to me that they have a strong leader that's in front of them. And, you know, I think that, I think that a lot of the initiatives you've been taking on have been, you know, fantastic. We've always been proud of our police force, we continue to be. This 15% on the Facebook likes, is that year-over-year, or is that quarter-over-quarter? Can you get it to 20?
Yeah, we'll certainly try. A big hit was Shiloh the Dog, so ended up getting rescued, there was 25,000 hits on that.
Oh, yeah.
Ask if it's a 5,000.
Chief, you know, kidding aside, though, you know, you seem to be doing a fantastic job. I know that the communication, I felt that the communication between you and the Board has been, you know, it's been great, you know, we're not getting too much, I feel as though I'm getting enough, and just, I'm incredibly proud of how this force is acting and reacting to things that happen in the public, so, thank you.
Mr. Cattino.
Yeah, I'm just so pleased and amazed that every month, there seems to be a new initiative, and now that I'm working, working more in town at Golden Pond, you know, I see all the officers come through, both police and fire, and the professionalism is just outstanding. And the new program that you just started for us, to document many of the residents that could be flight risks and such, it's just another great program. You know, we've just gotten spoiled with such a wonderful force, and with this list of accomplishments and things that you're going to do going forward, I think we're going to continue to be impressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mosher.
Chief, you named off a bunch of activities the Department's taking part in, are those things the Department's done all along, and you're just kind of consolidating this and giving us an overview? Are there new things that you're doing? Are you coming up with these things? Are they being facilitated by members of the Department?
We certainly work as a team down at HPD, and I certainly would, you know, I've certainly taken what I've learned through my career, but it's a team effort that we come together, we work together as a team to collaborate on ideas, which is best for the community, and I certainly have to give most of the credit to the men and women of the Hopkinton Police Department, who do just an outstanding job. But HPD, looking at the history, has always had a, been active in the community, obviously, surveys before I came in with the community have certainly done, citizens have been quite satisfied with the amount of things we provide for them, and that's what we'll continue to do. A lot of these are new ideas, and most of them that I read tonight are new ideas, but there's a lot of things that have always, always been there, but the, most of them are new initiatives that we're working on.
Just one more quick question, I know heroin is prevalent in many communities, are we holding our own, or are we seeing an increase, decrease?
We don't want to fall behind in heroin.
No. Yeah. We certainly, you know, I have two detectives now, I have one assisting in the battle with this heroin problem with other communities, and it's certainly, I wouldn't say it's, you know, more prominent here than anywhere else, obviously, the big cities, metropolitan areas.
You're not seeing like a big increase here locally, or something we should be immediately concerned about?
Well, I think everywhere you're seeing an increase, where you haven't seen as many attempted, just this year alone, we've had three knock-in saves. I brought.
Wow.
Knock-in to the Police Department, over a year period, I mean.
Nonetheless.
Yeah, and where we've obviously never had that before, because we never had the knock-in as far as on the police side, and so, yeah, I think you're seeing a little bit of an increase, but you're seeing it everywhere.
Thank you. Mr. Herr.
I think the communications are going great, I appreciate that very much, and I'm not asking it for any other reason, but I'm curious, how would you define and describe the morale in the Department today?
Well, I think I have a pretty good pulse of what's going on down there, and it seems positive. I'm greeted every day with smiles in the morning, and I don't see when people are leaving at the end of the shift, it's not like they're running out the door, when you see that, people headed to the parking lot, like it's the start of the Boston Marathon, it's usually a bad reflection on your leadership style, so I think it's been good. I've gotten certainly a lot of good feedback from many officers on the Police Department, and as well as the dispatches, and I think, you know, without tooting my own horn, I think morale's at a pretty high spot.
How are those Facebook likes of the people in the park?
They get time off a click.
That's my sense as well, that I think that the morale's pretty good, and it's an important piece of the puzzle that you want to watch and certainly nurture, but I think, all in all, I think it's going very well. Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much for coming in tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, item seven on the agenda, IT Director Update Discussion, Josh Grossoetti, the IT Director for the Town of Hopkinton, will present an assessment of the Town's IT program to the Board of Selectmen, and it includes a memo.
Good evening. So for those of you watching at home, and the folks here, I realize that I'm likely a new face to many of you. My name is Joshua Grossoetti, the new IT Director for the Town, and I've been in this position for about three months now, and I'm here tonight to give you a report on my initial assessment of the Town's IT Department. I'd like to start off by thanking Chris McClure, the previous IT Director for the Town, and Ashok Ghosh, the IT Director for Hopkinton Public Schools, for providing the modern infrastructure that's in place today. The network servers, storage systems that are in place right now are extensible, and able to handle current foreseeable future computing demands. I don't see these infrastructure systems as limiting us. I don't see these infrastructure systems as limiting us in any way at all. As is true in many technology environments, however, we do have a small number of legacy hardware and software subsystems. These systems should be migrated to more contemporary systems to ensure resiliency, and arguably more importantly, ensure the town is able to obtain proper support from vendors should there be an issue. It's important that these upgrades and changes are done thoughtfully, systematically, and proactively, so we're not forced into making decisions if we experience an unforeseen issue. It's also important to note that these subsystems represent a very small minority of the town's overall systems. Again, as a newcomer to the IT environment here, I'm very pleased with the environment that I've inherited. The town has leveraged cloud-based systems where appropriate, namely, our office productivity apps, including email, calendaring, and contacts, as well as our document management system and finance and accounting system are all running in the cloud. We've moved to the cloud and are using software-as-a-service platforms in cases where there's a standard commercial software package or offering that meets the town's needs. These are not one-off custom apps that are running in an Amazon, AWS, or Microsoft Azure type of platform. So in this way, we're on the same platforms, using the same systems as many other businesses, which helps to ensure that we have product support should we need it. We should continue to leverage this type of outsourcing whenever possible, as it will enable us to keep a small internal server and infrastructure footprint, thereby eliminating complexity and helping to reduce operational and upgrade costs. The vision that I have for the Town of Hopkinton is that we continue to build upon the great foundation that's already been established, shifting our efforts away from infrastructure and instead refocusing on the process, how we go about our day-to-day. When we spend less time on care and feeding, we're able to spend more time creating, improving, and thinking outside the box, testing what we believe to be true in terms of how we must accomplish our tasks. Internally, for town employees, this means ensuring that we're leveraging technology to best streamline processes and realize the most effective methods of completing our work. How can we migrate more processes away from paper forms and physical filing to systems that are natively and only digital? Externally, for our residents, this means ensuring that we're delivering the best possible experience for them. We should be looking for opportunities to implement more automation of tasks and ways to process and present our residents with the most accurate and relevant information they need in the most expeditious manner. Ease of use and simplicity are paramount. One of the first things I begin to look at is a redesign of the town's website. This is likely the method from which the majority of our residents interact with the town. We average over 400 unique visitors every single day. My vision is that Hopkinton becomes the gold standard in terms of what technology can do for a town. If we're doing this right, this process is never done. We should strive to be the benchmark by which all other towns compare themselves to. Any questions? I can answer.
Thank you. Excellent. Mr. Kamal, do you have anything to start off with?
No questions so far.
You're good. Okay. You know, I went to Mrs. Sistari first last time. Since you're the resident IT specialist, I will start with you again.
Josh, how are you doing?
Good.
It's only been three months?
It's only been three months.
Wow.
I hope that's a good thing.
Absolutely. You've already settled in well, I would say.
Yes, thank you.
From the comments I hear from other people, so, how have you been enjoying the position? Is it what you expected? Are there any kind of surprises, I guess?
No, I think no, no big surprises. It's what I expected. It's what Norman explained it to be. Very happy.
Great, great. I want to thank you for the assessment of this. I know that in the past, we had Chris explain what he was proposing the infrastructure as, and, you know, I absolutely trust Chris, but sometimes he also would speak up here, and, you know, I'm listening down here. But it's, I think it seems to be all good news as far as the infrastructure goes. You know, I like your approach as far as, you know, starting at the front and going as far downstream as you can, and really trying to make a better experience for folks in town who are coming and accessing the system. 400 unique hits a day, unique.
Unique visitors.
Visitors.
Yes.
That's a lot for a small town.
It is.
So, you know, I think that it seems like we have some foundation of information that's out there that people like, and, you know, certainly we'll think that we can improve. And, you know, I like what you've said about the current system. I'd love to see, I'd love to see us not end up really challenging the extensibility of our internal systems. And, you know, I think that as we run, hopefully, the body will also address with the applications that have become more standard, so, a few percent, they don't need to be groundbreakers, but it's nice to start pushing some of the expense, well, get rid of some of the expense and picking some of that up.
Agreed.
Sounds great, and I'll just go up there.
Thank you.
Mr. Morsure.
Well, thank you for the overview. It sounds more like kind of refining versus big radical changes and taking a temperature of the environment here to see how you can evolve that and work full processes. So it all sounds good. Like Mr. Sistari, I was kind of like, wow, 400 unique visitors a day. So that's, so that's another town hall. That's, that's really important, and I think our website is in dire need of updating. We should make sure it's friendly for all age groups also, and different levels of skill and comfort with IT, because that is, it's our virtual town hall. So I'm glad to hear that you're working on it, and can't wait to see it.
Mr. Herr.
I know we talked before you were appointed, and I'm trying to remember if you had been in the public sector, or private sector, or a combination of the two.
Private, private sector, but prior to this, I was in a nonprofit environment.
Okay, okay. I love the ideas of trying to get as digital as we can. I think it's, that's the job. I mean, this is kind of your world, right? There is some stuff that will require a hard paper world, because it's the public process, and sometimes the public process can be a little bit archaic. But I think you're off to a great start, and I appreciate all your energy and effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cutino.
Yeah, I, I really know that town website needs to get fixed, because I noticed today that I wasn't listed. That was the only select.
It's been since resolved.
But who's checking that?
You know, I say this profile picture wasn't exactly.
The picture was there.
One person in town checking that.
You fixed it?
He's there, because I saw you today. I saw you.
No, no, you'll see.
I was staring at you.
Moses cut in half, and I'm not there.
No, man, you're on it. You're back up.
I'm back up? Okay.
What is this?
I don't know where you got the mustache from, but you're back up.
Yeah, it's drawn on. Now, on a serious note, if, if at some point you can give us an update on the collaboration that we, that town meeting last year, we spent several hundred thousand dollars on security and cameras and, and.
That's the schools.
But, well, with schools and then, and stuff also had to go down to the police station, we also did some expansion there. I just wanted to make sure that everything's coordinated, because we did it without, without anybody, you know, on the town side of, with IT. We used the schools' IT person, but, you know, we just didn't have anybody on the top. The superintendent of school said she was going to overlook it, but it's something I thought that we really needed to have a true IT person. And if at some point you could just take a look at it and, and come back to us and see if the money was spent or is being spent effectively.
Sure.
Thanks, that's good.
Did you have a thought?
Yeah, I do, actually, kind of along those lines, but wondering, have you noticed, first of all, how well, how well do the school systems and town systems interface? Do they interface at all?
We, we shared, we share platforms more so than I would say systems interface, so the, the town and the schools have done a really good job of leveraging economies of scale when it comes to our virtualization environment, our storage environment, and our, our core network and switching environment, having consolidated all of that under, under one roof. So from that angle, I think it's as efficient as, as we could be. In terms of operational systems, where there is overlap, I mean, we do collaborate, but I think by, by the nature of, of running a town and running a school system, there's a lot of systems that are going to differ. So in those instances, we're, we're not able to.
Okay.
Mr. Kamal, yes.
If I may, on, on that topic, I think a couple of points. One, owing to the transition on the town side, I, I think the pace of the, our efforts towards working with the schools on joint projects is somewhat slowed down. Secondly, I'm also realizing that perhaps we've gone as far as this joint relationship could take us.
Bless you.
So going forward, perhaps most of the collaboration is going to be purely opportunistic.
So, so is there at least an effort, I guess? It sounds like, it sounds like from more of a hardware standpoint, we're collaborating with the schools to find efficiencies. I'm wondering, in the rest of the technology staff, more on the software side, are we trying to, you know, somewhat come together and standardize how we move forward? Because it'd be great if, as we go down the line, we can, we can find efficiencies in the resources for, you know, you need animals, right? So, just wondering, are we close to that, or thinking of that?
I'd say we're certainly thinking about it. You know, again, in the, in the short time I've, I've been here, I have had a number of, of conversations with Ashok, and he's been very helpful in, in every way, and willing to work with, with the town wherever, you know, the two of us think there are any kind of efficiencies to be had. Again, I think just by, by the nature of the types of system differences that we'll see some, you know, and again, I don't, I don't know the schools certainly as well as, as he would, but scheduling software, right, grading software, I mean, the kind of things that they're going to have in place, just by the nature of that, we're not going to be able to overlap.
Right, and that from the application side.
But, but in terms of, again, I mean, another example, though, where, where we are able to, to join forces there is the Google platform. So we've standardized on, on Google for messaging. That's something that holds true for both town and schools.
Right. So, and that was my, what I was thinking, I don't think there's that many opportunities to collaborate with the schools, you know, because the infrastructure's gone away, right? We don't, we don't have servers anymore, right? And they don't, they use the payroll app, the payroll program, they tied to that, they're already tied into all that downstairs, right? So, not that there's a lot of.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, we'll see, you know, there'll always be some amount of infrastructure that, that will need to exist on, on premise. And, and again, I think we, we have that already, really, as efficient as it's going to get in terms of economies of scale and, and working together. But yes, to your point, I think in the future, we'll, you know, my hope is that we continue to move more and more to the cloud and rely less and less on that on-premise processing or, or resources.
Okay. On, on the website, I agree, it's desperately in need of an update. Definitely it's kind of antiquated, and it doesn't work on all platforms, and, you know, it's sort of, it would be nice to make it, I don't know what it would look, what a better website would be, but I think it's going to be a better option out there. Other than that, are there any other major issues, concerns, things that we need to be aware of or looking forward to?
No, nothing major to be aware of. I think, you know, again, the, the good news is there's no big red flags here or anything that, that I'm seeing and saying, oh my goodness, right, we, you know, we, we need to address this yesterday. You know, I, I see lots of opportunities for, for small efficiency improvements and where we may be able to be more effective in how we get something done. But again, this is efficiency and effectiveness-based kind of process improvements, not burning systems, which I think is, is good.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We're good. Thank you for coming in, Josh.
Certainly. Thank you.
I had a meeting agenda, Street Name Acceptance Action. And the board will consider approving a street name for three lots on a paper street, which is off Leonard Street. The proposed names are, one, Box Mill Road, two, I think it's Meheran Road, three, Leonard Lane, four, Leonard Circle, and five, Easy Street. There's requests and some permitting comments. The permitting comments primarily consist of the fact that the recommendations by the public safety are against anything involving the word Leonard, to just eliminate any kind of confusion. And also remind the board that previously we declined to name a road Easy Street a few years back.
We did.
We didn't like it.
You're right.
So with that, you are here.
I'm the owner. My name's Richard Barbieri. I'm the owner of the property.
Okay.
I could explain the, the engineer found there used to be an old box mill on that property years ago, and was owned by the Meheran family. That's where those two names came from.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you have any questions for me. It's a little three-lot paper road that I'm improving.
All right. Okay. Any, who wants to start this off? Mr. Morsure, any, any questions?
No questions, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go for it. I think, I think people will listen.
I'll make a motion for Box Mill Road.
Second. A motion and a second for Box Mill Road. Does anybody else, any competing candidates? Okay, all in favor of Box Mill Road, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, President.
Thank you.
Welcome to Box Mill Road.
Thanks, Norman.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Item nine on the agenda, Liquor Licenses. 2016 Changes and Hours of Operation Policy Discussion. Action item, the board will review hours of operation policy for restaurants and related establishments, and then consider approving nine licensee requests for a change in hours or other aspects of their licenses. This, the board has discussed this a couple times previously. We drafted a policy, we reviewed the policy. The goal for tonight, I think, was the board to go through the policy one last time. Mr. Kamal, you can talk about the changes we've made or where it stands. Board can ask any final questions. The goal here is to make the next move to be to a public hearing, which is required, we're required to post this for anyone who's going to have their hours changed. And then we do that in one of these meetings, and as, and we do the public hearing, and then we would vote to implement the policy. Mr. Kamal, you, anything to say?
In, through the chair, in summary, the changes that have been added to the policy subsequent to the board's last meeting include the following. We have provided more clarity and specified the requirements for the Farmers Series Pouring Licenses. We have also identified the requirements that apply to the special temporary licenses. Remember, this is a concept that we have had in the books for a while, but the town has never specifically laid out the requirements for such licenses. In addition, we laid out the requirements for the Farmers Market License, and these are different from the Farmers Series Pouring Licenses. The Farmers Market Licenses pertain strictly to the Farmers Market as we have in the common. The Farmers Series Pouring Licenses are tied to local brews that are tied to, in fact, that are related to local farming operations. And then finally, a couple of the things that we, we laid out in terms of the hours. Remember, the, I had received specific comments from some of the existing establishments with regards to special events. I did provide some suggested hours for New Year's Eve. I laid out 12:30 a.m. as a likely end point for, for that particular night. And then finally, fees. In reviewing this policy, we did identify a couple of issues that the board will need to address, perhaps as we move forward, one being the idea of identifying a base fee for all the applications. And then number two, revising our fee schedule to line up with the new categories, and also the new terminology that we're using in the policies, so that at least when people come to the office, they can quickly identify what the application fee is for that particular license that they may be interested in. So in summary, we've clarified the requirements for the new license types that the board has been discussing, including the Farmers Series, the Farmers Market, as well as the special temporary licenses. We have also identified new hours for New Year's Eve. I did not touch Sunday night football, Monday night football, Thursday night football. And we have also laid out the general operating requirements for all licenses.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kamal. I also want to point out the board today got a letter from the 110- I also want to point out, the board today got a letter from the 110 Grill, which is sort of a detailed discussion. In essence, what they ask is that we not do what we're doing. They recommend that we continue licensing on a case-by-case basis and address the hours individually. That just came in today. Mr. Herr, questions to start this off?
As long as we're moving towards a process where the establishment owners have an opportunity to come in and address the policies that we're considering, I'm very comfortable. I think it's imperative that we notify every establishment in town when that public hearing is going to be held, and we post that public hearing wide and far in town for any community members that want to come and weigh in on it, so that we don't get any sort of Monday morning quarterbacking going on post a decision that will be made at some point soon. But I think as long as we're moving towards that public process, and the public is aware and notified, and they participate, we'll make a good decision, and we'll be able to move forward.
All good points. Mr. Mosher.
So up until today, I heard surprisingly little from people that may be affected by this, but I did get a phone call, and I think there's a misconception about why the board set out to do this. And my recollection is that we had some annual approvals, the times were all over the place, and there were some new establishments coming into town, and we kind of looked at it and said, you know, is there an advantage or a disadvantage to some of these businesses based on having individual times? And then there was also some input from the police chief, knowing when closing times were, making it a little easier for officers to enforce some of the rules around these licenses. So that was my perception. It wasn't that we were looking to shut things down and bring the hammer down on businesses, but it was more of a consistency cleanup to make things a little bit easier. To Mr. Herr's point, there is a process around this, and we want to do the appropriate thing for the town, for the residents and the businesses. So that's, I guess that's just my piece, what the original intent was around taking a comprehensive look at this, was to clean things up from fairness, consistency, and convenience.
Mr. Sestari.
Silly John. No, I like this. I think that, to Mr. Herr's point, we need to make sure that word gets out with ample time so that people's businesses aren't affected, you know, as long as they have an opportunity to come in front of us and talk to us about, you know, any variance in the hours that they're requesting, and they feel they require. My one question is, I know during the last discussion, the question came up on the fee for a transfer of license, and possibly having that be based on the percentage of the sale price of the license. And I'm wondering if we have an answer to that.
The law in Massachusetts is very clear in terms of establishing fees. Fees are based on the time that the town spends reviewing the fee, and nothing else.
Okay.
So that would be a no, because if the license is being sold for 50 grand, you're still on charge if it's being sold for 5 grand.
Hmm?
The answer to your question would be no.
Yep.
Can take a long time to review a sale document.
Okay. Ms. Catino.
And me, when I came to the hours, I was guessed them as the only dissenter. Because I, as much as it might be okay with some of you that, you know, the businesses can come fight for, later on, they can come and fight for what they have now, to try and get, if they have a 1 o'clock now, and we're telling them that five nights a week they have to close at 11:30. Adding it up, that's seven and a half hours of business that they're going to be closed. And for some small businesses, that could be a lot. You know, I think that we probably should have, if we were going to level the playing field, level the playing field and make it easier for the police and give it like a midnight straight across the board or something, and maybe the businesses wouldn't take as big a hit, as opposed to 11:30, five days a week.
Can I jump in real quick?
Mr. Herr. Are you done? I'm sorry, are you, for that?
He may not be, he may not be after this.
No, it's fine, hey, we've gone at it before.
Do you have other things you want to say?
That's, that's right.
Okay, so fine, Mr. Herr, yes.
So in this chair, I haven't voted on anything. I'm not a dissenter or a proponent of anything. Until we have the public hearing, and we hear from the community, and we hear from the ownership and the establishment about what their concerns are, I haven't made a decision about anything. So I think you're, with all due respect, jumping the gun, saying you're the only dissenter. I might be a dissenter too, I don't have the facts yet. I don't want to put a message out there that this is a done deal. It's not a done deal at all. It's not a done deal in my mind. And I don't want a message to the public that it's a done deal until we have the public hearing.
I can tell you want to go.
The document says draft right on it, and we've had minimal input from establishment owners. I think we did have, we have one person in here the last time we spoke about it.
Who was actually okay with the changes.
But they were here for another reason, they weren't even here for, you know?
It was okay with the changes, and we've continued to refine this document, so.
You haven't dissented yet, I think the point is...
No, but when we were drafting this, we could have drafted it for 1 a.m., and then said, okay, now come back and discuss it. No, but we drafted it at 11:30, five days a week, and...
All right, so let's talk about what the board does here, right? The board takes, does what we think is proper, after deliberation. We did talk about the fact that we do, I think there's a general consensus that we at least perceive there to be some difference between businesses that are downtown in a heavily residential district and non-residential district businesses, right? And we, and the extent we've gotten feedback so far, I've heard no one but you push for 1 o'clock, right? I've had no business come in and say, I want to be open to 1 o'clock, seven days a week. So I think it is important to point, you know, I think you're trying to create a distinction from yourself and the rest of the board that doesn't, that the board doesn't feel exists. I think everyone's drafted this. I think there's a public hearing process for a reason, and then we'll refine it based upon that.
Okay.
Question, anything else? Does anybody want to change any of these things before we post a public hearing? Ms. Kamala, do you have any thoughts on this, or in your mind, is this right to go to a public hearing?
I think for the public's interest, my understanding of the process so far has been the board thoughtfully going through the issues that the policy may address. Secondly, at staff level, we also did have an informational meeting with some of the key establishments that will be impacted by this, gathered their feedback, and will share it with the board as part of the public hearing process. And thirdly, we have, the board has reiterated at every meeting that there will be a public hearing for this process. And as part of that public hearing, staff is required, the town is required, to contact all establishments that are impacted by this, so that will happen. And then thirdly, we are also maintaining our lines of communication open with the establishments. Some of them are here tonight, and we'll also be inviting them to the public hearing. The goal, again, has been for the board to at least put together a document that will be available at least 14 days before the public hearing for everybody to review.
Thank you, Ms. Kamala. Mr. Sestari, you have a follow-on.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I'd like to ask the town manager, on the license fees, the transfer of license, how accurate would you say $100 is to the cost that's incurred by the town to review documents that pertain to a new liquor license or a new purveyor in town, with respect to town council, public safety, people here in town hall, and anybody else who's involved? Would you say it's less than $100 or $100?
The time spent by town staff and town resources is substantially higher than $100.
Okay.
Both are the 110.
So it seems to me like we should be able to come up with a better number than $100 for the transfer of license.
As a general comment, we should make sure the fees obviously are covering the costs.
I think a market study of the fee would make sense, just a quick call to the surrounding communities, because that sounds extremely low.
Ms. Kamala.
In this day and age.
Through the chair, we have an established two-step process for recommending fees for the board's consideration. First step, we do a detailed review and analysis of the times actually spent processing the application. We then seek information from surrounding towns purely as a point of reference, not necessarily as the reason for establishing the fee.
Okay. Mr. Mosher, over to you.
Chair, Mr. Kamala, you mentioned you'd spoken to some establishments in town. Could you just kind of summarize what the feedback was, or if there's anything specific the board should be aware of?
Yes. I met with representatives from the establishments that currently close at 1 a.m. There were four establishments represented at that meeting. There appeared to be concerns with regard to how the proposed hours could impact days that the establishments have established over time as event nights. I mentioned Sunday Night Football, Monday Night Football, Thursday Night Football, as well as New Year's Eve. The second concern was that there are establishments in town that have clearly created a late dinner niche in the market. In other words, they are known establishments that people visit at 10:00, 10:30 to get a meal, and they felt that they were going to be losing those customers.
So... Well, John, keep going, I'll come to you next.
Just a quick follow-on question. Would it be appropriate to ask the department heads that weigh in on permitting, maybe to put a report together for the town that would outline if there's any history of noise complaints or public safety issues around these closing times that, because I don't know, if there's information that may or may not be there, could we put our town professionals on that, say, yes, there is this issue, and/or maybe no, there isn't this issue, that we could take into consideration?
Well, again, members of the public can come to the thing too and talk about whether they're back to their lives or not.
Yes, and the draft policy will be circulated to the permitting team for comments.
Okay. Mr. Herr.
You know, I haven't been doing this for a while, because I have five kids, but I think Boston, everything closes at 1 a.m. Is that true? Does that sound familiar to everybody? Is it 1 or 2 a.m., whatever it is? But it's, I think, across the city, everywhere, for bars and restaurants. And some close well before that, because the business dies off, and they say, okay, we're going home for tonight. And I guess that's my goal here, is to try and be uniform in how we do it. I don't care if it's 1 o'clock. If that's what the people think, and that's what the businesses suggest, and that's what, you know, the community wants, I'm fine with that. But I think we just need to be consistent in that time. We can't give one a 1 o'clock license and say to somebody else, you're closing at 11. That's, I think, highly discriminatory and unfair business. That said, you know, in the 15, 16 years I've been in town, I can't remember the last time I was in a pub or a restaurant in Hockington at 1 a.m. that was open. I wasn't there when they were closed either, for that matter, but I don't know who these four places are where they're serving food and that's going on at 1 o'clock anymore. Now, maybe I've just become a boring old guy, but I just, I don't care. But we have to be, have to be consistent, in my opinion.
Well, again, that's what the public hearing's for, right? Is to hear, is let folks, it's basically come out now and, you know, say what you think, so. Okay. Go ahead.
I just, I hate to, you know, keep my questions on the same subject.
Back to the fees. Let's get back to money.
So, Mr. Kamala, I just want to put out a hypothetical, so I understand when monies are paid. John's Restaurant decides to sell to Ben's Restaurant, and Ben's Restaurant comes in in the middle of the year, and they want to have John's Restaurant transfer their liquor license. They have an all-alcoholic beverages license. The transfer of the license costs $100 according to this, according to this schedule. Is there any other money that needs to come to Town Hall? Does Ben's Restaurant pay that year, that first year? Do they pay an additional $1,800 for the all-alcoholic beverages license? Or are they only paying the $100 transfer fee?
I'll defer to Maria on this one.
My guess is just a transfer fee.
So Maria?
Just $100. So, well, my, what my suggestion would be is, we're going to do the same due diligence on this new restaurant as we would any other restaurant if it was a fresh new license. So I think the fees should be the same. So why can't we have, you know, if we have to break it out, have an all-alcohol, restaurant all-alcoholic beverages transfer fee license that's the same as what the fresh license is, $1,800? And then a restaurant wine and malt-only license, transfer license, that's $1,200, and break it out like that? Because it seems like it's, there's justification, it's the same amount of work.
If I may, in fact, the proposal you'll receive from staff would be along those lines. We did discuss at least having a transfer fee for pour licenses, substantially higher than what we have at the moment. However, there are also simpler transfers, for example, change in manager, transferring part of the ownership to an individual, part of management. We are going to have, we're going to propose a lesser fee for those kinds of transfers. But your point is well taken, that's what we're going to do.
Okay. I won't talk about these fees anymore tonight.
Okay. Anybody else got any comments on this before we move on? Okay? Two, three, um, three, um?
I'm good.
Okay. So, all right, so why don't we go off, make those changes, and then let's post a public hearing for, I mean, realistically, a month or so, right, Mr. Kamala? I mean, we should kind of end up, end of March, maybe, early April. Good. Liaison reports, board events and invitations. Mr. Sestari, any liaison reports?
Just continuing to meet with the charter review committee. We have gotten through three chapters. And some great input from the group, you know, and it's also helpful, we've had Ray or representatives of his firm there for each meeting, and we're making progress. It's lots of discussion, so the progress is sometimes slow, but at this point, it seems like we've got some time, so.
Okay. Good. Ms. Catino.
Yeah, last night I presented six bylaw changes to the planning board. There were actually 12, but we combined several of them for, there's some changes to the signed bylaws.
That's the, we don't need exact updates.
No, the planning board.
Okay. Are you planning board liaison?
Planning board liaison.
Okay.
Yes, well, they're going to be, they're going to be on the town meeting warrant. You know, people are going to have to sit through those. But it would have been 12, and we reduced it down to six, and there were some, some good ones. Okay, I'll leave it at that. If you want to keep cutting me off, it's okay.
Ouch. Getting tested here. Mr. Mosher.
I don't have any updates, Mr. Herr.
Oh, sure, he could have yielded some time to me.
Okay. And Mr. Herr will get, pick up with him. In terms of invitations for the board, Lieutenant Wallace is having a retirement party this weekend. I unfortunately have longstanding plans to be out of town, so hopefully someone can attend that from the board. Huh?
March 11.
No, February 27th.
Yes, but...
Oh, and then, yeah, 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 I was going to do that one. Yeah, 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 we'll get to that. Okay. So we should figure out who can, who in the board can go to that one. And Mr. Kamala, we can pay for that on the selectman's account, right? Because that's an official activity, so we should, anybody who goes and has to pay, I think that's covered by the selectman's account. My other, my other report would be the fact that we have now scheduled the library groundbreaking for March 11th, 10 a.m., so everyone should mark their calendars, it'll be a large event. March 11th, it's a Friday, at 10 a.m. So three weeks, right? So... There's no significance to that date, too. I don't know. We'll have to keep, so, so that's, yeah, so that's the next big event. On the town manager's report, Mr. Kamala.
Mr. Chair, with your permission, I would like to add a request that the board authorize a letter of support for a grant application that we're putting in to support the town's trails project.
When's it due?
Due yesterday.
Okay, so, fine, I'll add to the agenda then, so there's a, there's a definite need to get this done. Okay, so go ahead.
So, yeah, the, therefore, the first item is I'm requesting the board's authorization for the chair to sign a letter of support to a grant application that the Upper Charles Trails Committee, working with the Land Use Director, has submitted to this date. That application is currently under review, and we're very optimistic that the town has put together a very competitive application.
Okay. Any questions on the grant letter from anybody? Chair, I intend a motion to approve the execution of a letter in support of the grant for the trails.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, further discussion. All in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post president voting, that's unanimous. Okay, Mr. Kamalo will sign that letter after the meeting.
Okay, E.L. Harvey contract, as we know, the current contract expires end of June this year. I'm advising the board that I've already, together with the DPDW director, started conversations with E.L. Harvey in terms of how we could proceed. Depending on our preliminary conversations, the town, town may at least be faced with two options. One option is looking at an extension to the existing contract, or simply go out and do an RFP.
Okay, so the contract expires June 30th, so the board has to decide quickly what we want to do. So I guess we should have a discussion about this at the board level. So how do people feel about revisiting the harvest contract in full versus just going and offering a, a, a extension?
So, in revisiting the contract, that revisits the question of what the contract scope is, which revisits the type of services they provide and the methods in which the residents utilize those services, et cetera, right?
Correct.
So, just so we understand what the deal is.
Yeah. Mr. Kamalo, do you have something to add?
The scope of the contract is already defined. It covers solid waste.
Okay, I don't know what that means.
It means trash, recycling, are all covered in the contract.
Right, so let's, let's just get right to it, right? So, so the question is, the question is, how deep do you want to go down the rabbit hole, right? So, so we can, can we, right, the big question is, do we want to go single stream? Do we want to go fully automated, all those kind of questions? So, Mr. Kamalo, can we do that in the context of an extension of the contract? Can we have those conversations? Or would that be such a change, we'd have to go and do a whole new RFP? I think that's kind of where Mr. Herr was going to, like, does that, does that fundamentally cause us to have to start a whole new process?
It, it can be discussed in the context of an extension of the existing contract.
Okay.
Because there is reference to...
Those items.
To automation.
Okay, so we don't have to go through an RFP process to revisit those if the board should choose to?
That is correct. And also, by law, we, the town is not compelled to do an RFP for waste management contracts.
Oh, really? Okay. So maybe, why don't we keep this high leveled in the start? I guess the question for the board is, does the board want Mr. Kamalo to look into doing, to extending the harvest contract, or is there any desire to go out and do an RFP and look for a broader change? What the extension would entail is a whole different question, or can be a whole different question, is what I just heard.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say that I'm displeased at any level with, with the current service and provider. I guess my biggest question is, is it our fiduciary responsibility to put this out to bid? Because it's a, it's a large contract, and we've been with the same vendor for how long now?
Been here six, seven years now, and all my time here, we've hit E.L. Harvey.
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, I have no issues with, with the service that's been provided, I'm just, you know, questioning whether, and, and what, what's the dollar value, the annual dollar value of the contract?
It's pretty substantial, around, I'd say 650,000.
Yeah, it's over half a million bucks.
A little north of that.
I mean, you know, I would, I would hope that if, you know, whatever, whatever we were getting, you know, whether it's, you know, insurance, or trash pickup, or things like that, you know, for a number like that, I would hope that at the end of a contract, you know, we have to, we have to consider putting out some type of an RFP.
Well, it sounds like we can negotiate, too. We could negotiate an extension that, to our, to our benefit, and obviously, we want to win-win for them, too, but we want to negotiate, I think, as well. I think that's an option.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree.
Well, and also, just to, not to dissuade any of us, but just to point this out, though, if we do that, that's going to mean setting a scope of services, which is going to, again, inherently involve a discussion of all those topics that came up last time, the recycling, the single stream, the bins, all that kind of stuff. So we should just be prepared for a large conversation if we do that. Okay. And we're going to have to probably have that conversation early on, because we're going to have to do that to be able to get bids.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Moser, you've been quiet.
Yeah, I'd love to have the conversation. I think single stream would just be easier, for one. I think it would keep things a lot cleaner. Last few windy days we've had, I've seen a lot of, lot of stuff blowing out of recycling bins and trash bins and things like that. It'd be great to have some better receptacles for that sort of thing. Some people have asked questions about the size of the barrels, and I'd be interested to see if there's flexibility around the size, if people choose to have a smaller size. Recycling bin was pretty ginormous that we saw last time, and I think there was a substantial savings to the taxpayers also.
So, Mr. Kamalo, I think what we should probably do is maybe for the board to consider, maybe we could have like a little, just even just a bullet point list of key elements, we have to decide what we want to do before we do it. I think we should be gearing up for an RFP, is what I think I'm hearing from the board. We should be... You, I guess, you know how your head, but I, so I guess I took that as a...
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that we don't do a reduction in, in services throughout this, this whole thing. Four years ago, we, we went from unlimited to two barrels of trash, and I just want to make sure that, since we just passed that $9 million, that people are paying more this year, that we're not going to give them less.
You know, and I think that, to Mr. Herr's point, it's, you know, it's probably also worth a, a quick conversation with, with E.L. Harvey as well.
About what, though? I mean, I thought, you just said a minute ago, I thought you wanted to do an RFP and get it, put it out to bid.
Well, I'm, you know, I think that, I think that if, if we're in a situation where we can justify not putting things out to bid, then I think that's fine.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be difficult, I just want to understand what, how would you know that, given that you said you want to put it out for bid, because you want to make sure the cost is right? How will you know the cost is right if we don't have comparators?
I think if the cost were, if, if the, if the burden on the taxpayers were coming down for the, for the level of service that we have right now, I think that...
Okay, so if we can get a cheaper contract at any level, you're, you'd be content to not put this out for bid, okay. Mr. Kamalo, did you say, were you going to say something? I'll come to you in a second, I just want to make sure you didn't have anything important.
Yes, and it, in fact, it expands on Mr. Sestari's point, that I think tactically, it's helpful for, for staff to sit down with E.L. Harvey and get a sense as to what direction the contract may take going forward.
Okay.
In terms of compar, comparisons, we are pretty familiar with the numbers that are out there. We share this information with our partners, and most importantly, there's a, there's an individual estate level who's assigned to assist us as towns when we go through this, this contract process. So we do have the market basket comparison.
So you don't have to necessarily go out to bid to know?
Exactly, and we can make a quick decision in terms of, is the, is the information we're getting from Harvey's advantageous to this community or not?
Okay.
And we also factor in the town's long-term goals. You may get a great contract for, for two years, which may not necessarily support the town's long-term goals. So there are several considerations that we take into account in deciding whether to stay with the, the existing contractor or go out to RFP.
Yeah, and I also don't want to discount the value in having a local vendor as well, and, and a partnership between, you know, businesses within the town and the town itself. So, you know, don't think I'm discounting that either, so.
All right, so, Mr. Kamalo, why don't we play, I'm sorry, Mr. Herr, do you have something? Were you going to say?
My only thought is, I'm not inclined to go to RFP, I'm more inclined to negotiate with our current supplier to improve services and try and work for the taxpayer's benefit, with an understanding that that will also, I think, include scope of services and how we do what we do at the curb.
All right, Mr. Kamalo, so why don't we, why don't we start the conversation with harvest about an extension? I think you heard the pressure points, we don't want reduction in service, we do want reduction in expense, and I think we need to revisit these topics that we didn't come to conclusion on last time with regard to automated trash collection and single stream recycling, sensitive to the questions that were raised by the board previously, on, in a number of different ways about those topics. But I do think, I do think we've heard from the community that there's a desire to, to move in that direction, so we should see if it could be done reasonably.
If I could just add one other thought, and I would, I would encourage us to consider a phased approach over a period of time to any changes that some may view as being drastic. Let's just walk before we run as we move into a recycling, the age of recycling in Hockington.
Okay.
So, Mr. Patino brought up the point of expanding services, and to Mr. Herr's point, and I've heard this from several members of the community about considering weekly recycling. So maybe that's something we look into as, as an option.
Again, my guess is all this stuff starts to come together, right? Because you've got to get the cost down if you want to do that kind of thing, and not see, that means you probably go in single stream, which means you're probably having to talk about the bin, so this is all going to get tied together, I suspect, in some ways.
So this may be a crazy, what is single stream?
Everything goes in one, everything goes in one bucket.
So plastics, cans, paper, everything?
Everything, everything goes in one can. Remember they, remember they...
Kind of like some members of my family do now.
Isn't that easier for them? It is, it's easier, yeah.
It is, the, the issue last time was, everyone liked it, except the cans were ginormous, and so that was the issue for, for folks.
Did the cans have wheels?
Yeah, but they're big, I mean, like...
We can actually, like, we can mix, mix them now.
All right, okay, so we can get into the weeds later, but I think...
We can get into it, and then they wanted to go automated, which meant they had to have all the same can, which meant they wanted to give everybody new cans.
There's the part where I'm saying, walk before we run.
Well, again, I, but I don't, I, I hear you, except I don't know that it's not all tied together, because, you know, there's only so many ways you can cut the costs, right? One of it is the guys don't have to go to the truck anymore and get, pick the stuff up, which means you've got to have a can, you can pick up in every case. So it, again, we're going to have to work through a matrix, I suspect. All right, Mr. Kamalo.
But I still think we should, you know, we should, we can't discount a, a local employer that brings a lot back to the community.
Okay. So, good, so we're going to work on the contract.
Right.
Next, Mr. Kamalo.
With your permission, Mr. Chair, let me jump on to number three, the 203 Pond Street realizing...
Yep.
The proponent is here. The conservation restriction proposed for 203 Pond Street has been reviewed by all entities, Halt, the State Agency, as well as Ray Mier's office, and they've all approved the language as presented.
Okay. Dave, hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
How are you?
I've been better.
Shouldn't have asked.
I'm dealing with, I'm dealing with one disaster after another, so...
Okay, I'm sorry to hear, but thank you for coming in tonight.
This cold weather really did number on my house at the Cape, so... Anyway, it's been a three-year process for 203 Pond. We're about to have signed the CR for the 32.34 acres. We've done the surveying of the property, and...
I was trying to say, thank you.
We've spent a lot of time preparing the conservation restriction documents. There were some last-minute changes. John is now living, Mr. Coolidge is now living up in New Hampshire, and so the New Hampshire address and New Hampshire notary has been affixed to the document. I have two copies for signature and four copies just for your use. I haven't signed this document as yet, but essentially what we're saying is, do you want?
Yeah, I'll take it. Yeah, sure, thank you.
You have four copies, say aye.
Right on.
I have the two signature copies, which I will sign for you.
These are for execution, Dave?
Those are the corrected editions, yes.
For, for execution, okay.
Excuse me?
For execution, for signature.
No, I have the signature copies.
So these are just for us to look, look at?
Those are just for you guys to...
Yeah, we have electronically, I didn't realize, I thought you were giving them...
To enjoy, so, I'm wondering if, at the present time, there's a trail, or are trails on the property?
This is all your stuff.
Okay, there will be more trails, there will be a parking area off-street that will house six or seven cars, similar, or maybe even larger than the one that we've prepared up at Whisper Way. I don't know if anybody's been up to Whisper Way to see that, and that is going to be and is a premier property. We've had a lot of action up there, that the GeoCash is getting a lot of action, the trail is getting a lot of action. So we're here to have this signed off, and I'm wondering if anybody has any questions?
Okay, questions for the board, Ms. Patino.
No, this is, this is something that Trail Committee's been looking forward to, and there's a big change. I'm really happy about this one.
No, I just like self-interest.
Well, all I can tell you is, we walked there in the fall, and I came home with about a half a dozen to a dozen ticks, so...
Yeah, it's ticky, yeah.
It's, it's, it's a good property, the trails will be premier trails that will go over to both Whitehall Conservation Area across the street, and also the Upton State Forest.
Mr. Moser.
And we'll be open to question.
Mr. Moser.
And bike riding.
Mr. Moser, one more time.
No questions, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Herr.
All this is in line with the deal, the sale of the land, everything else is agreed prior.
As a matter of fact, SVT is getting the land, and as soon as this comes back from the state, the land will be transferred over to SVT.
I think it's great, I've, I have discovered trail running in Hockington in the last year, and it's awesome, so I'm excited for the town, and I think it's a great opportunity.
Mr. Patino, I mean, it's Mrs. Sestari.
No questions.
Dave, my que, so who owns this land?
Right now, John Coolidge owns, John and Ann own the land, it will be transferred to Suburban Valley Trustees at the same time that this gets recorded, when it comes back from the state.
So it'll be owned by SVT?
It will be owned by SVT and will be managed by us. The Hope Hockenberry Land Trust will manage the property under this conservation restriction.
Okay. The town council has...
Yes.
Has reviewed it, the, the selectman's involvement is purely administrative.
Right.
Again, Suburban Valley owns...
Yeah, owns it.
...oversees and manages locally, and by law, the selectmen are supposed to, are required to sign.
Okay, well, before we, I'm sorry, Mr. Herr, go ahead. Oh, can we, Dave, how, how do you, didn't we, didn't we have an agreement before about how you're going to name things? Here's why I'm asking you.
No.
I drive into Fruit Street property, and I see trails that you all have named, and I don't know how or why.
Okay.
You had, so, because it's on town land.
Correct.
So how do you, didn't we come to an agreement before about, about how you're going to not name things on, without the board of selectmen's approval on town land? Yeah.
On town land, the board passed the policy that the board would select a name for the property itself.
Right.
Has nothing to do with the trails. The trails are, the names of the trails were done in conjunction with SVT, and the names of the trails are entirely separate from the name of the property.
Yeah, that, to me, is a difference without a distinction. I think, or distinction without a difference. I think you, I think you went in between, I, in the, the li, I think you went outside the lines, trying to stay within the lines on that one, and I don't, I, I don't like what you've done. Because I think you're trying to avoid the selectmen's clear desire, which was, we name things on town property, not you all independently of us. In every circuit, in every single circumstance in town, every single town-owned asset, the board of selectmen decides what the name of it is, and I'm very disturbed by the fact that I'm going into town properties, and there are...
Only one.
Named assets, there are named assets that are, that were not run by the town for approval first.
Only one.
Doesn't matter, and I'm not, and I have no, and I have no qualms with the specifics of that name. I do not like the way you're executing that policy, though, and I think, from my perspective, and I'll let my colleagues talk, I think you need to stop that, because I think that's going to be a problem for us conveying things to you in the future.
Okay, I understand entirely.
I want to be very clear about that.
I understand entirely. I guess I must apologize, then, for not coming to the board and suggesting the name for that particular trail. We will, in the future, come back to the board. If it's a town property and we hold a conservation restriction, we will propose names for the trails, and you guys can approve them.
Ms. Camallo, am I overstepping the board's authority on this one? Just, I mean... Okay. I don't believe so. Just want to make sure. Because Mr. Goldman, as you heard, had an alternate view. Yes, sir.
So it's a new discussion for me, anyway, in terms of naming trails. I can understand the concern. Which trailer are you talking about?
There's a trail on the Fruit... Yeah, there's a trail on the Fruit Street property that they named. It's on town property, and they named it. And I have no... I don't mind the name. It's not the name. What I don't like is the fact that we made clear to him, because I remember I was, you know, we made clear to him, we want, "We name things." And all of a sudden, these names start showing up, and we never even knew about it. So...
If you guys are open to it, I think it makes sense, because we're consistently talking about names, you know, on streets.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, it's not showing up everywhere. It's the one trail.
Well, again, that's the one I see, because I drive past all the time in the spring. I didn't know that until you just told me that. All I saw was one example.
It is the one and only trail that we took the liberty of naming without coming to the board.
But going forward, because we just bought a lot of land that's going to have some trails on it here in the next few years, going forward, you guys will come and we'll talk.
Well, and part of the reason I'm perturbed is it would have been much better named on the new land we just bought, right? So we could, you know, there would have been a better... If we could have talked about this first, we could have had an equally good, if not better, solution that would have taken into account our views, which...
Let me propose the following. We're proposing to put another trail in the Fruit Street property, and the name we would propose is the Pratt Trail North Section. And we will come to the board with a letter that says that's what our proposal is. And if that's not what the board's desire is, then we will propose other names.
Right. I do not think it is a matter of policy you should name anything without running it by the board, if it's on town property.
Okay.
I agree with that.
And we have not done so, other than that trail.
Okay. Well, you're about to do it a second time, it sounds like. So don't... Yeah, don't. Because again, Dave, think about in the context of the farm itself, right? I mean, there's stuff that can do that. So I'd like to have this conversation. I'm not against any names specifically.
Easy Street.
I do want it. I do want it. Exactly. Unless you want to name it Easy Street, we're never going to go for Easy Street.
Well, the trails... The North Section Trail could indeed go into the Pratt property that the town now owns in the future, and it can carry the same name.
Well, again, okay. Well, again, we'll have the conversation.
Could. We'll have a conversation about it.
When you come in, we'll have the conversation, but I don't, you know, we don't need... You know, we can sprinkle names around, right? There's other names in town.
For the record, for this particular property, we're proposing to call it Whitehall Woods.
Yeah, okay.
The reason we're going to do that is the Whitehall Woods Alliance was involved in, as you guys know, the attempt to have the town buy the property in its entirety, and we felt it appropriate to name it Whitehall Woods.
You own that land, so whatever you do with that is not my concern.
Well, Suburban does, and we have a conservation restriction. We don't think the town should be involved in naming that particular property.
I agree with you.
But for the record, I'm stating what it's going to be, so that you guys have no question about what it is when it shows up as Whitehall Woods.
Right. And again, if it's not owned by the town, you do as you like, obviously. But I just want to make very clear that there should be no more naming of any assets without coming to the Selectmen's.
I hear you, and I respect the comment, and you will not see it happen again.
Thank you, sir.
We will come before the board and request, suggest, and request that you approve the name that we select.
Okay.
If you don't want that name, then we will suggest other names to you.
Well, I do think one thing that might benefit you before you just come to us would be to go to some of those entities that are involved in laying the lands out. And let's think about naming stuff in a holistic fashion, right? Let's maybe rather than just do this chunk and this chunk, you know, but the Pratt Farm Master Plan folks are working now. The Fruit Street, obviously, there's people involved. You know, maybe a better pathway would be rather than just committing incrementally, let's figure it all out and then do it all at once.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I don't think the board will have... My board will have a problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not against anything. I just want to, you know, I like to be thoughtful. Okay. With that, unless there's any more questions about the matter at hand, which is the CR, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the conservation restriction on 203 Pond Street.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Questions? Mr. Hur.
Town council's been through the CR. Town council's all good.
Yes.
Okay. I'm all set.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Present on voting. That's unanimous. Thank you, Dave. I appreciate it. Thank you for putting up.
I'm going to see Maria sign this and leave it for you guys to sign. I'd like to get two copies signed, if that's possible.
Of course. These are your papers. That was in the bottom of the stack of stuff you gave me.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's all right. I just didn't want to keep it.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Camallo, next.
Starting updates. I hereby advise the board on the steps that the Town Manager's Office will be taking in filling the operations assistant to the Town Manager's Office position. I have shared with you an outline of the steps that I will be taking. I just want to walk you through briefly the steps that are outlined in the memo that I shared with you. First, defining the need. This need is driven by the opportunity presented by Jamie's resignation. And I believe it also presents us with a strategic opportunity to at least address some of the long-term needs of the town, as well as the Town Manager's Office. I am proposing that Elaine Lazarus assume the bulk of the duties and responsibilities previously performed by Jamie. The question is, what does this accomplish for the town? I have outlined in my memo, at least one, two, three, four, five, about six or seven immediate benefits to the community. One is, we will have an individual who is familiar with the land use processes in town now working together with the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Town Manager, on economic development issues. I think that's a plus, given some of the most recent developments in town. We will also have this individual participating in the administration and the administrative, as well as operational functions of town government. I think that's an added advantage in at least bringing together the administrative side, as well as the land use side of town government. She will continue to provide staff support to key and strategic boards in town. These include the Upper Charles Trails Committee. As we know, this committee is intensely involved in a major project in town, and I think having somebody at a senior level continue to work with that committee would be advantageous. Similarly, she will also continue her work with the Zoning Advisory Committee, as well as the Evan Todaro Properties Advisory Group. We will also have this position attend to special projects in town. These are projects that come in on an ad hoc basis and require our immediate attention. For example, we are currently working with all-town departments to develop performance metrics for the individual departments. She will become the point person for that project. In addition, she will now take over the responsibilities for overseeing the town's risk management program. This is a program that has resulted over the years in substantial efficiencies and savings for the community, and we want to continue to have somebody at a senior level oversee this work. She will also become the point person in managing our grant writing. As you heard from the finance director, we are, I think, doing very well as a town in bringing grant resources. In FY16, we have already brought in over $5 million worth of grants to this community. And finally, we believe by having Elaine in this position, that will... That process will strengthen the town's administration in the form of having somebody dedicated to focusing on operations. That in itself, therefore, frees the Town Manager to focus on the key, large, big-picture strategic goals of the town. Quantitative benefits for the town, I think, as I said, better integration between land use and town administration, integration of economic development into the land use processes. I think that will result in a better product for our business community, as well as our residents. And also, by doing so, we are providing an opportunity for professional growth and enhancing our leadership pipeline for an in-house staff person. It's always great when the town looks inward for some of these senior leadership positions. What happens to the current duties that Elaine performs for the land use departments? Jennifer Beck, the principal planner, will take over support to the planning board. Elaine will continue to work with Jennifer in completing the updating of the master plan. Elaine will also continue to monitor the implementation of legacy farms. This is a substantial project. She has the history of the project, and she's more familiar with the community expectations. And I believe she's better placed to monitor the implementation of the project. We also would like to see Elaine focusing on some of the, you know, staff support that I normally do with the HR department. This will see her interacting more closely with the other department heads and the senior leadership of the town. Brian, in answer to your question, is the funding for this position budgeted?
Yes, it is. There will be savings, at least in FY16, given the fact that we will not be filling the position that Jamie vacated. What do we need to do as an organization to make sure that Elaine is successful? I think town government will need to present this role as one that will pick up many challenging work and also provide the required development support that normally would come from HR to Elaine. Implementation plan, I want to do this immediately. I have been in conversations with Elaine. She's excited about this opportunity. I've talked with the chair of the planning board. He understands why we need to do this. And what are the risks? I think there will be a learning curve for both Elaine, as well as Jennifer Beck. And you will see the normal transition cost that you get whenever you promote one individual to another position. We will also commit to having the Town Manager and HR continue to monitor and evaluate the implementation of this proposal. Take any questions from the board? Again, the idea here is to have Elaine assume the bulk of the responsibilities that were previously performed by Jamie that moves it down to the Town Manager's Office. The question may be, what is her taking? Clearly, the take is moving her role more towards the assistant town manager role.
Mr. Moser, ready to start?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Norman, there's a few things... There's a lot in here that I like. There's a couple of things I'm not sure if I like, but I want to make sure I got this straight. So you just wrapped that up and then alluded to the assistant town manager's role. And one of the things that I don't like about looking at this is filling the operations assistant role. I think Elaine's held a position that's senior to the operations assistant for several years now, both in pay and both in responsibility. And so I think we need to define the role, what it is she's going to be doing. I mean, Jamie, a large portion of what he did was administrative work. Great relationships with the community and customer service and all that sort of thing. But... And I think last year, prior to budget season, or during budget season, we talked about the assistant town manager's role. I mean, that's really what we should probably be growing towards, right? And to me, this proposal looks a little bit like shoehorning into the role that Jamie had. And I'm not sure why we don't just talk about, like, Director of Operations or Assistant Town Manager. What it is that we really need, what it is you're really trying to get to.
Go ahead.
I think overall, you... I think as the board did experience this, and I think the community saw this. Yes, Jamie was brought in to do administrative work. On the ground, the town was getting more from that position than what we're giving back to Jamie. So day-to-day, Jamie was acting, in fact, as a chief of staff. He was attending to customer requests, not necessarily from an administrative viewpoint, but rather from, "Let's get it done." He, for example, if there was a question coming to the office regarding a service provided, let's say, by DPW, Jamie's role was to make sure that he interacts with the director to make sure that that piece...
But, Ms. Camallo, this goes to the title, though. I think it was his, right? The title is...
The title and some of the job expectations, I think, that Elaine's got...
More administrative.
Tons of this planning experience. I think she has a master's degree now, or is close to it, correct? And while Jamie kind of grew that role up, you know, I'm not sure that moving from Director of Land Use and Planning into Operations Assistant is the lateral move and is the position that she's moving into really the role that we think the town needs.
To be clear, she is combining two positions. She's not leaving her directorship of the Land Use Department. She will continue being that director. And then she's also bringing that higher-level director role to the operations function of the town.
So...
Keep going. Keep going.
So I understand that. But if, and this is going back to last year a little bit, I think that it wasn't that there was a need around the assistant town manager, but that it was late in the budget process, and it really wasn't as defined, maybe, as all this would have liked. And so, you know, if there's a need for that going forward, should we be thinking about this kind of higher-level position? And then if we're doing that, how do we set that person up for success, right? And splitting them between the responsibilities that they had, moving them into new responsibilities, is not always the right formula. So I just want to make sure we're really thoughtful about what we're doing with somebody that's got a lot of town experience, that has a relevant education, and has had a senior role for a long time against what the needs of the Town Manager's Office are going forward.
Keep going.
Yeah. A couple of things. Clearly, again, she will not be coming in to do administrative work. We have a specific role in the office that will be taking care of that. In terms of the longer-picture view, I think that's why I said we're doing this because there's an opportunity and also because we want to pursue some of the strategic, long-term goals that we have had for the office in terms of our needs. And so what then, what this proposal does, it gives us an opportunity to actually test-run the concept of an assistant town manager, to put it bluntly. Yeah.
So just...
Keep going. Yeah, keep going, Ms. Camallo.
So I think, I don't think we test-run this. If this is the way to go, then you've got to commit to it. That's what I think. So I'm not knocking the idea, like I said, that I think there's a lot of good stuff in here. But I think the position needs to be a little more clearly defined, maybe than trying to ease in it. Let's... What is it exactly that we need, and how can this person fulfill that clearly, right? And not kind of diluting her skill set across multiple obligations. That's what I'd like to see around this.
Okay.
Just, again, finally, if you look across towns, it's not unusual for the assistant town manager position to have responsibility for another large department. It could be land use. It could be finance. It could be HR. So this thought process does not necessarily dilute the position, but it also, what it does is it actually, I think, strengthens the organization. It's also fiscally responsible. But in the long term, it provides, I think, a professional growth and development path for an employee who's in-house.
The ideas you're broadening are not putting her into administrative tasks.
Yeah, so that's a fair point. I'm not familiar with how things are done all across towns. I know sometimes they're done differently, public versus private. I just want to make sure the role is defined. It's a role that's appropriate for her experience and skill set and that it does extract from administrative so that there is the ability to be strategic and it is clearly defined. She has the resources to be successful.
Mrs. Histori.
Yeah, I think that this proposal has a few merits. You know, first of all, I think that we need to keep Elaine growing and challenged. She's clearly shown that she's... She has strong contributions for the town. We need to make sure that we're keeping her engaged. The other thing is, I think, that the Town Manager's Office and the Town Manager himself can benefit from having her type of experience and her level of experience aid him in his day-to-day and also in his strategic efforts for us. I think the other thing that... I think the other thing that this is good, the other reason this is good is, right now over on the planning board and the board of selectmen and take the town manager's office and land use and planning, it's really these silos. And I think that having some link between the two is, is a benefit to the town. And it helps us be, you know, that, that one town that we want to be. And, and it also helps us coordinate our efforts between the planning board and the board of selectmen. One thing that I'd like to see, and I don't know if the answer is available tonight, but one thing I would like to see is, so we've got, from a budget standpoint and I guess, you know, an HR standpoint, we've got over in land use and planning, we've got Elaine's position, and then, I'm sorry, who's, who's taking on some of her responsibilities?
Jennifer Beck, the principal planner.
Jennifer. So we've got, we've got Jennifer and Elaine. And then over on the town manager's tree, we have Jamie's old position. So I understand that Elaine will continue to be director of land use and planning and be drawing, you know, for what it's worth, you know, some of her salary from, from that pocket of the town. And then we're also going to supplement her salary essentially from, from Jamie's salary pool that's available. So then there's still some of Jamie's salary pool that's available. There's also some of his responsibilities that, you know, we're probably not going to have Elaine be responsible for directly. So I'm wondering what, what the plan is with that. Is the plan to try to, try to grow that small pool into something where we bring someone in of Jamie's caliber again? Or is the plan to just use what's left there to bring someone in who, you know, is probably a little bit lower level than Jamie was? And I'm, I'm just curious what the plan is there.
There are two schools of thought regarding that, that question. One, there may be a need to at least strengthen our administrative pool. There is an idea to have a roving administrative support person, specifically having them work with the town manager's office, the HR office, and the town clerk. That's, that's one school of thought. The other school of thought is how those funds could be used to strengthen the land use department. We, we have an individual in the land use department who has excellent financial skills, who can actually grow into processing all the accounts receivables for the town. We may actually bring that, that, that position into this discussion as well. Yeah. But the first preference would be to get an administrative roving individual who will support at least the town manager's office, HR, as well as town clerk.
And would that require an expansion of, you know, outside of regular annual type type expansions? Would that require an expansion of that remaining salary pool?
I don't believe so.
Mr. Catino.
Okay. Not taking anything away from what everybody else asked, I think those are wonderful questions, but trying to look more on the positive side. I've been working with Elaine on a weekly basis for many years now, and I think that that, that giving her some of the tools from the town manager's department will really make her shine. I think that this, it's the, you know, looking at the strategic focus with growth issues in town, that's something that, that came up with the cross point and, and all of that, that people were saying, geez, isn't anybody looking out and marketing the town? You know, some brand, somebody out there that's going to help us with brand recognition. And I think that, that the integration of economic development and land use is going to be a real boon for the town. So not, all those other things are very important, and I think we have to look into them, but this is just something, I think she's going to be just fabulous for, for the town.
Okay. Mr. Herr.
In general, I like the concept and want to explore it further with, with everybody. I'm concerned that we're talking about personalities more than we're talking about organizational behavior and structure. We're running a business here, and with all due respect to all the individuals, us included, it should run regardless of personality. And a lot of the discussion is about personality in individuals, and I think we have to focus our organizational plan and structure based on the needs of the organization and the growth and the process to go forward. So I would just encourage us to keep it at that level as we go through more discovery to figure out what makes the best sense, what makes the best sense for the community. Second, and I think my colleagues were touched on it a little bit, but just to be clear in my head and for those that are interested at home, when we went to town meeting in May, there was a request before town meeting to add a position called the assistant town manager, correct?
That is correct.
And was that position going to be an increase in headcount?
Yes.
In this plan, regardless of the personalities, this structure you're describing, would this increase headcount?
No.
So this would keep headcount flat or would it be down one?
Down one.
So we'd go down one in headcount and our cost structure would either remain the same or actually decrease slightly?
I would like it to remain the same.
Okay. How about the administrative support to come in to support this position, that roving position, whatever, is that an increase? Would that be an increase in headcount? I mean, what's the long-term plan to support this new creation? Is that going to increase headcount?
It will not.
Okay. So the only concern I have outside the personality discussion, which I'm sure we can get passed quite quickly, is are we violating the will of town meeting by trying to do this or not trying, implementing something along these lines? And I don't remember all the details of the debate around that question before town meeting, but I'm assuming a fair bit of it was increase in headcount and increase in cost. So if, if that was the debate at town meeting and that was the concern and that's why it failed, then we're not violating the will of town meeting by not increasing headcount and not increasing cost. And then I'm more comfortable moving forward with an organizational structure discussion and then we'll slot in personalities after we figure out the structure. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes. In my understanding, the request before town meeting was whether we could appropriate funding for the position. I don't believe that the charter or the town bylaws require town meeting approval of the organizational structure.
Fair enough, but there's politics in town and there's perception in town. We have to manage to that perception whether we like it or not. And as long as we recognize and respect what town meeting said, but still recognize that we have to manage the business on a day-to-day, week-to-week, and month-to-month basis in between town meetings, and we're not violating the, the message that town meeting put forward by saying no, I'm comfortable with it. But I just want to be very clear and articulate those ideas and those thoughts and those concerns so that anybody else shares them, that they can voice them now before we go too far down this path. We're not voting on this tonight, I assume, so...
There's nothing to vote.
Sorry?
There's nothing to vote. He runs the store.
So he could go ahead and do this unilaterally?
He can do it. He's just, he's just like, I mean, again, this falls in the category of things that are unambiguously in his control. He's just, unless he needs more money for it, which he doesn't, he can, he can do this tomorrow. He could have already done this.
All the more reason why we should, you know, support where we can these types of initiatives. So I'm, I'm very interested. I like this idea. I think it's a growth opportunity for our structure, our structure. It's not a burden on the taxpayers that I can see and any, an additional burden. It's not a future additional burden by increasing headcount. So I'm wide open to it. The title, I think, is something that we need to be sensitive to because town meeting said no assistant town manager. So let's be, respect that and understand, not that we're trying to do an end around, but that we want to do this in a way that's respectful of that decision at that time. Can you do that?
Yes. I think, I think as, as you said earlier, there's work to be done. On a day-to-day basis, we have to manage the organization, making sure that the work gets done on behalf of the citizens of this town.
Okay. Mr. Mosher.
So, so to be fair on the town manager thing, there was, last, last year was last year, and you bring up some good points, Mr. Herr, but I, there, there wasn't a, a real structure around that proposal. And I think that this is, this is a good time for Norman to be able to put that structure around this and, you know, pack it up. I just, I'm just not entirely sure how you do it without headcount either. I mean, are things slow in the land use department? Are we going to have one administrator in this position in, in the, in the town manager's office? And then I just go back to the point I made earlier. I just want to make sure this position's able to succeed. But I think we've, I've said enough and kind of talked about it enough, so I'm good.
From my perspective, I think this has been a really good conversation. I mean, I, I like the high, I like the high-level comments. I think the structure stuff is spot on. You're exactly, I think, in fact, you were saying the same thing. I do think, so Ms. Kamala, I mean, again, this unambiguously falls in your purview. You don't have to come to the board to move people's positions around as long as you're obviously fulfilling whatever contractual obligations you have and not looking for more money. I will say that I agree with all this about the structure part, though. I do think we need to tighten up maybe the, the title a little more and the job. So strategically, it makes a ton of sense to me. Let me start with that, right? Everything Mr. Catino said, I completely agree with. Like, land use and planning is paramount in this community, and so, and, and so having a person who can, who's been doing that for a long time, but who also can start to take a broader view of it. I mean, if I recall correctly, you came up through the planning side of things, right? So I think, I think having someone who can grow into that role is fabulous. We, I would, I think the recommendation, the suggestion from the board, and that's all, I think all we can do really is, is this may lead to a little more tightening of the job description. We probably don't want to use the word operations assistant to the town manager because I think it, I think it carries connotations, at least for some of us, of a more administrative role. I think we should think a little bit more about how we want to delineate the town manager's responsibilities because this obviously could, could take care of some of that and free you up for some things. So again, I, I think what, the reason I think you need to do that is so you can explain to the board who does what, and so we can also understand what your role is, which I think will grow in a different direction as well, and so we can start to think about that for you. So I think this has been a very good discussion and, and I don't think, I think the board's generally supportive is what I heard, but, but I think we do think it just needs to be a little, a little bit more clarification, a little bit more thought about the title. I agree with everything about the assistant town manager. People aren't, and I think people aren't inherently against assistant town manager. I think we just didn't do a very good job of presenting the rationale or any of the attributes of it, you know, why it really mattered last year, the compelling points. So I'm less, I'm less bothered by the title, but we can figure that out later. Anybody else want to talk about this at all? We don't need to get, do anything for you. You're just, you're just reporting to us. Okay.
Great.
Next. Fiscal year seventeen budget update.
Yes. Just wanted to give the board a heads up that we were gearing up to presenting the budget at the board's next meeting, March 1st. Before then, I will be contacting you individually just to walk you through the numbers as we see them.
March 1st, did you say?
Yeah, we have three meetings in March.
It's next week.
One, eight, fifteen, every three, every, the first three weeks of March. I will, this comment, Ms. Kamala, we are behind, and I know why we're behind, and I'm not upset that we're behind, just sort of the way it happened with the downstairs this year, but we've got, we got a lot to do and not a lot of time. Where's, is Chris here? Who's Chris? No, he's not here. We got, we got, we got a lot to do, right? And so the budget's making me very anxious right now. Anybody else have any anxieties they want to relay?
Just a quick question. Are we, are we getting together with our friends in the school committee to coordinate through the superintendent's office various discussions?
Yeah, we were talking with both the superintendent as well as Ralph.
Okay.
We have committed to making sure that we keep them in the loop as the process unfolds.
Do you sense any disconnects between those two offices at this time?
At this point, I'm, I'm not sensing any. I, I think our first meeting was very productive. I, I'm always impressed by what I hear from Kathy. Her, her vision for, for the school department is, I think is impressive. And as we've proven over the last years, we will always try and find a way to, to support her goals and her team's goals.
Are these meetings in the same space with everyone sitting around a table, looking at each other?
Yeah, we, they have a better conference room, so we, our last meeting was...
That's fine. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else in town manager's report, Mr. Kamala?
This point, I believe, I'm...
You're done.
I'm all set.
Okay. Future board agenda items, Mr. Catino.
Again, I think we should start looking at parking downtown.
Parking, wow, okay. Mr. Herr.
None that we haven't...
Would you have something to say on that?
Yeah. On that issue, I think our goal is to come before the board in March 1st or the following meeting to present a progress report on the Main Street Corridor project.
Okay.
So repeat that for me, please.
Mr. Catino had indicated a desire to hear more about parking in the downtown. I pointed out that staff is planning to come before the board in the next, in the March 1st or the following meeting to present an update or the progress report on the Main Street Corridor project.
Including the intersection?
Yes.
Has it gotten a lot more interesting? And you said you were going agenda items. Mr. Mosher?
Two things. I got an email from somebody, I don't know, maybe a month ago or so about GE moving to the Boston area.
Oh.
And I wonder if this might be a good time to crank up 2020 again, see about just tracking...
If we had somebody in strategic economic development. If we had somebody in strategic economic development.
Right, right. So that was one, and then the other one was around parking also and the, and the intersection around Galloway's property there.
Yeah, we need to spend some time on that, Mr. Kamala. We've got to find some time to work this, that, I mean, in a meaningful way. We should really think seriously about what we can get done this spring on that. Okay.
I can assure the board, we will be very busy on that project.
Yeah, okay.
When, when we met last week with EverSource and Mas D O T, I think we actually defined some of the issues that we all need to be working on, and it's pretty substantial work on, on Dave's part.
Okay. So let's make, let's get the agenda the next couple of weeks if we can, you know, probably maybe more than once. Okay. That's it for agenda items. Chair, Lantana motion to adjourn.
So second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
President, I want to see unanimous. Good night, everyone.